It is 9:02, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. There is a quorum present because Commissioner Watkins and I are here. So we'll go ahead and do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are going to go straight into an executive session in accordance with ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. The Gillum County Court will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D, which allows the court to meet an executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to remain in the public virtual meeting room or to leave the courtroom while the court reconvenes in a private virtual meeting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about the subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to the audience in the public virtual meeting room. For those who are logging on, our intention is that we will go into executive session. If we conclude prior to 10 o'clock, we will go ahead and recess until 10 o'clock. So for those who are wanting to listen into the regular agenda, we won't actually start those until 10. If we spill over longer, then we'll start it as soon as we come back into regular session. Okay, I think we're ready to go in. Jump right in. It is 10:40. We are back in regular session. For those who missed it, we did, we established the quorum and did the flag salute back at 9 o'clock. So let's run into additions and revisions to the agenda. I have two to add. One, under unfinished business, I'd like to add, consider approval of letter of agreement with ASME. And then, under 7.5, I'd like to add, consider approval of engagement of services letter with CDR Labor Law. Any other additions? Nope. Okay. Let's go into...
We're going to do announcements, right, Glene?
Yeah, I saw you look like, what are we adding today?
I'm waiting. Was that a Twitch over there? Okay. Under 4.0, as correspondence and public comment, individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes. For those who are dialing in on your phone, it is *6 to unmute yourself. If you are here on the Zoom platform, it's the lower left-hand side of your screen. And then, just as a regular reminder, we are informal here. So as we move through the agenda, if there are items that you wish to ask questions, provide feedback on, we welcome those. Any public comments at this point? Is anybody on Zoom? Don't see anybody. Okay. Under correspondence, we have a couple of items in here. The first one, Mary sent us over the Oregon Public Library Statistical Report for 2022, which she is required to submit yearly. And so this is just FYI to us about all of the, basically demographics, a number of people who are coming in, using the library, all those kinds of things. And so folks, if you're interested in looking at that, it'll be part of the court packet online. And not surprisingly, it's an area where lots of our public uses it. So I'm glad to see that. And we're like, right, okay, let's see what else is in here. And we have an updated quarterly report from Paul Conway for his veteran services. And he had left out a few things on the one he gave us last time. And so the updated version is in the court's packet for this, this meeting. Again, I will say, and I always say, if you know a veteran in the community, please connect them with Paul. He is fantastic about connecting veterans and families with all the various benefits and services that they are entitled to and can kind of walk people through those processes. So if you know somebody, he is here in the courthouse on Thursdays, but splits his time between Sherman, Mueller, and Gillum County, and so is always available on self-look. And then we have a, an email from Jeremy Young, who is a Condon resident regarding forever chemicals in local bodies of water. And so there is an email on that that will also be part of the court's packet. You can read that online. Let's just look that up and see what that was, what all of that, yeah.
And I reached out to the SWCD to possibly get some information that we can provide to him in response.
Remember all the waste management's work at rezoning and everything for a landfill is to deal with that waste stream. If it does, it will become regulated, which it is not at this time. And we probably have as much of that PFOS in us more in it than that fish that was talked about. So yeah, it's PFOS, something that comes from even the Teflon and the brine.
Interesting. And the other thing, and this is just in FYI, is that there's a public notice out right now from our friends over at Oregon Department of Energy, EFSEC, regarding the Oregon Trail, sort of the next step in the setting process for that. Basically, they've moved forward, they've issued the proposed order, and now is the opportunity to request a contested case. And we'll just note for the record that the draft conditions right now, or the draft order now includes conditions that require Avon Bridge to have those agreements with the Port of Arlington and SWCD for their community donations in place. So that was good, those matched, and so that is helpful in moving that process forward. And so if anybody's interested, there's a whole process, if you want to contest it, that you have to go through. And it's above my pay grade, so you can contact Department of Energy if you're curious. And last thing is just, we were CC'd on correspondence from Judge Patnood, just covering her requirements for continuing legal education hours. It just details all of the various trainings and conferences that she's done in order to meet the hours required of her, her search to statute. And so she CC'd us on that. That will also be included in the packet if you are curious about all the training she's been doing. And I think that is it under correspondence. So let's move into the consent agenda.
On the minute from the last meeting, and I think I'm not asking for a change, but maybe everybody remember, it was not a big deal, but I didn't bring my pack, but we're talking in the minutes about my question to Ryan Walsh with Avon Bridge about how many houses can run off of one windmill? And he put in there that, he said it varies state to state. And I don't know that I listened to what his actual response was. That may have been what he said, but I, I think the answer is that it varies depending on the size of the turbine. I don't know. I don't remember. I thought maybe you might remember. It's not that important.
Okay.
But I, I don't know why state to state would have anything to do with it.
So would you like us to go back?
I think it just says here, it says Walsh noted that it varies, but that 20,000 houses is a high number, and the number varies from state to state. So I wonder, I mean...
Yeah, I don't know why it would vary state to state, and I knew it varied by the size of the turbine. And that's what I'd expect his answer to be. I think I got, thinking about something else, and I actually hear his response. So I don't know what he did say. I don't know. It's a big deal.
Okay. Do you want us to correct it, or do you want us to...
I mean, I don't know that we should correct something that I'm not sure of.
Okay.
We just want to pull them and have...
Maybe pull them and let's just double check it. It's not, it's just a small matter, so it's not a big deal, but it's...
Well, can we move, can we approve the consent agenda with reviewing that?
Well, we'll just pull it out, and we'll just review them at the next meeting.
Okay, bring them back. Okay. So we'll pull 5.1 then off the consent agenda and ask for that to come back after we clarify what Mr. Walsh...
It's a pain, but...
So I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda, which now consists of, consider approval of January 18, 2023 work session minutes, consider approval of February bills pending review, consider appointment of Taylor McIntosh to Gillum County Fair Board effective February 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025, and consider approval of amendment number one to the memorandum of agreement with Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, let's move on to 6.1. It's a community council institutions update with our friend Kimberly. Thank you for being so patient while we were doing our other stuff.
No problem.
It's nice to see you in person. I feel like it's been a couple of years.
It's been a while.
Oh. You were here in September, and I had COVID, so I missed you.
Yeah, that's right.
Delaney was just reminding me. I was like, no, I haven't seen you for hours. It's just like, no.
And I've met with her since then.
So there you go.
So I have a few things that I printed, and I just, I should tell me on me that there, one packet is put together, but the other is not, and I just walked out the door. Okay. So bear with me. Yeah, thank you. Bear with me just for a second. There you go, Miranda. Thank you. That one? Okay, so that's one. There's a few more. Hopefully, these others go a little bit quicker.
Do you want Delaney to help?
We're gonna start on the first one.
Well, I might, I might take you up on that. I don't really need to go anywhere, though. Maybe. Let me, I'm really sorry.
Don't worry at all.
So this next one. Delaney is... Okay.
If that works.
Yeah, that worked. Sure. All right.
We've got great staff.
Yes, you do. Wow, okay. It looks like, well, there's just a lot of comments. That's what... There you go. So yeah, there about that stood. Okay, all right, I'll go through a few others.
Send anyone down to Miranda's.
Okay. Good to see everyone.
Good to see you too.
In Arlington, we're still down a clinician. Some of you may remember Malia Mattingly. She left, gosh, she probably left about a year ago quickly, and we have been unable to fill her position. So she continues to do clinical work for us remotely. She moved to Southern California. She agreed to still see people until we filled her position, but to date, we have not been successful in filling her position. And so when people want to be seen, they're offered to see her by video if they want, or to see Mary Helen or one of the other clinicians that are filling in. We're, we're piecing it together. It's less than ideal. So just being candid about that. The rest of the positions in Gillum County are full, so that is good. And when I was here in September, I mentioned that the state had given some funds to all of the counties for housing, and Commissioner Shannon and I met about that, had some good conversations. We have yet to spend those funds in Gillum County. It was 750,000, but we are, we will be working on that pretty intensively in the next month or two.
You know, we have a deadline on that.
The deadline for those to be spent, we received them in November, October, November, and they have to be spent in the spring of 2024. Yeah. And 750,000. It's purchasing...
And your idea was still to focus more towards family and issue rather than individuals?
No. I think that, so, so yes. When we talked with the staff, generally, what we heard is that the housing is more of an issue for the folks that we work with. So the funds, the housing is for people who have behavioral health issues and are in need of housing. And the clinicians felt that the larger need was more with families, a mom and a child, or a mom, dad, and child, or multiple children. So I don't mean to exclude the individuals, just that that's where the higher need was.
Now, you said that was in behavioral need. Was it more around addiction or behavioral need?
It didn't matter. So behavioral health for the state's purposes for these funds includes mental health and addictions. Yep. And... I think the biggest thing that gives us pause in any of the communities is the NIMBY issues. There are individuals, there are, you know, folks who would not be excited about CCS purchasing a home that, where we would be providing support to individuals who are receiving services. And I'm leaving my personal feelings out of that when I make that statement. Just, you know, I understand that there's some concern. So purchasing a home or individual units or buying a tiny house and putting it on a piece of property or something like that, that's easy. I mean, it's, it's easy to do that. The complicated piece is the location. And I understand that some might like these individuals five or 10 miles out of town, and then you don't maybe have the NIMBY issues, but the folks that we work with don't always have good transportation, and they need access to services. And so if you put them five or 10 miles out of town, that just doesn't work. So we were looking at one home or unit, units in Arlington, or one home or unit, units in Condon.
Is, is the idea, though, that the folks would be living in Condon or Arlington or perhaps already residents that are, you know, going through treatment? So to me, it seems like, okay, these are already community members who are trying to address areas that they feel they need help with.
Correct.
To me, the things that they are seeking help for don't change just because they're living, like, they can either live in housing and be supported and try to work on things that they need to work on, or they can still continue to live among us and go untreated.
Right.
You know, like, it seems to me that that's kind of short-sighted to be, you know, I understand if it was like, hey, we're gonna ship in people from other counties all over, and you be sort of the place where everyone goes to get treatment. But if we're talking about just providing a service to people who have already decided to be part of our community, I don't know why we wouldn't support people to get treatment and the things that they need to be successful in their lives.
I would agree. But was there any movement on the duplex that you and I kind of talked about? I don't know if it's still per se. I do know that the school district was incident too.
Yes. And there was some concern about CCS purchasing that because of NIMBY issues. Just when we just generally...
Where do the concerns come from?
And just general, I mean, I'm trying to be respectful, Commissioner, about people, but there was a few that heard of it, and they didn't flat say no, but they said that they thought that there were better places for our population to be housed, and maybe we should keep looking.
Because that has housed some people who were in real trouble in the past.
Well, I think that there's probably many houses in town that that's the case. Or it's, I think that it's a little bit easier to target us as an, as an agency as opposed to an individual. We didn't say a flat no. We just thought, let's get through December. And we'll see what happens with the school district, and then we're gonna pick this back up.
Now, the one thing about it, it was two units and probably in the price range that would work.
It was, it is in the price range.
You know, if you do two families, you could maybe have a unit with a family and a unit with some singles, two or three singles, and yeah.
Our, our thought was that we're gonna go door to door. And it's an outright use, but we try to be friendly. We don't want to just shove it down folks' throats. So we would go door to door, have a public meeting, and we'll see who shows up. But it, it was hard to do that in November. And we're just, we're looking at the holidays, and we thought, well, the day that works for us might not work for a lot of people. And then folks could say, well, yeah, you had a public meeting, but I don't know. It was the same night as the school Christmas party. I mean, we just thought we'll get through this, and we'll see what happens from it, with it. So got through the holidays. Here we are. If you know of any housing, that one in Arlington is great. Okay, so I have some fun stuff for you to look at. Let's look at the survey, and I have extras for anybody who would want them. We do a survey every quarter. People who come in the last two weeks of the quarter are asked if they would like to complete a survey to give us some feedback on how we're doing. As I just shared with you, like Malia, she is providing these services online. This is a paper survey. So we're in the process of taking this survey to be both paper and electronic. We're not there yet. So my disclaimer is that we are missing some people in the, in this delivery. There are some that don't have access to the survey. So you can see Gillum County's is the third page. You have agency combined. There were a total of almost 200 people that participated. Again, it's a voluntary survey. You have about 12 folks from Gillum County who participated. There was one person who wasn't happy with the third question. Staff were sensitive to my cultural or ethnic background, but, and which I don't mean to minimize that. The rest of the comments either strongly agreed or agreed, and then you have some specific comments for Gillum County. And a shout out there to Damon. That's great. He's your contact physician. I won't go through the other counties, but I provide them for transparency. But you could see how things are going across all of CCS. The next one we could look at is the enrollment data. It's the package that looks like this, a lot of numbers on it. The top page is all of CCS combined. Second page is Wheeler County. Third page is the Gillum, and that's the salmon color. Again, you receive all counties for transparency. And you have a side-by-side for 2022, 2021. And you can see that the number of people has really, like, in general stayed the same. We did see a big increase in the number of people that came in. And at the beginning of 2022, we attribute that to COVID, just people starting to get out and about. But otherwise, the numbers are pretty similar for that top section, which is outpatient mental health. The second section is chemical dependency. Smaller numbers there. And I don't, I don't know why that is. Well, actually, one of the big reasons is that with the passage of Measure 110, it's no longer required that people receive treatment when they have a drug possession. So that, that does account for some of those numbers, for the numbers being slightly lower. Kids, pretty similar numbers, and assessments also similar. Any questions on the enrollment data? And then, last but not least, I just mentioned Measure 110. So this is the burn document. This is a PowerPoint. Do all of you remember Measure 110? I heard you, saw you nod, and Commissioner Watkins and Campbell. I'll try to share a few things without putting in, well, you know, I'm not going to. I'm gonna insert my personal opinion. I think that Measure 110 is horrible. If you think about DUII treatment in Oregon, and I may have talked about this in September, if somebody receives a DUII and it's their first charge or first charge in a long time, they are asked to complete some things, complete some treatment, and stay in contact with the court, pay their fines. And if they do, then the charge gets dropped or reduced to a misdemeanor. And I think that that is appropriate. And in Oregon, though, you can get charged with methamphetamine. Well, you can be caught with methamphetamine, and you are issued a citation and told that you can voluntarily appear if you want, and that, and that's it. So I have no idea why we treat alcohol differently than methamphetamine. It just completely baffles me. I do think, and this may be unpopular, I did think that for people who were caught with a small amount of, let's say, I don't all use meth, it might be a little controversial. I think that sometimes people make a bad decision. And I don't know that that initial punishment for a small amount should have been as big as it was. This is like 2019, 1817. But I completely disagree with nothing happening. And I think that what is happening as a result of no charges, no consequences whatsoever, is, I think it's a disaster. I think it's a complete train wreck. I need consequences. I do not drive the speed limit because I think that 55 is a, like, a nice, comfortable number to be at. I drive the speed limit because I don't want to take it. I'm just being completely honest. And I don't always stick at 55, as Gary and I are...
He's downstairs if he's here.
I don't drive 55 when I'm late to the meeting.
I think that all of us do and don't do things to avoid consequences. And I love chocolate. I don't want to, to go have to buy a bunch of new clothes for eating more than I should. And I also don't want to have more health conditions, so I try to be thoughtful about those consequences, even though I love chocolate. And, you know, I just think we send the wrong message. So I'll get off my little pedestal there. And I do think that some form of treatment is helpful. So the state took all of the marijuana dollars, and they said, all right, we're not going to charge people. We're gonna have a lot of people going into treatment, so we need to fortify treatment. I think that we are able to offer some additional services with those funds, what we call Behavioral Health Resource Network Fund. CCS did apply for those. CCS did apply for those, even though I disagree with the premise of measure 110. But there was funds out there for Gillum County and I didn't feel that you would want me to leave them sitting on the table. So we did respond. We have not seen an increase in people coming through our doors for treatment. You can see that on the numbers, but for those that do come in, they are receiving additional services that they wouldn't have received before. That's the upside. So I'm not going to go through this PowerPoint word for word. I think that could be a little bit boring for you. But we do have more housing services. We have more funds for housing. If folks are in need of medication assisted treatment, I can't go on about enough about how bad fentanyl is, how difficult it is to get off of, how it's being laced with everything, including manure, you know, because it's cheap and, you know, all kinds of stuff. And people are becoming addicted to it and they don't even know they're addicted to it. They think they're buying meth and they're buying meth that's been laced with fentanyl and they like it. And they're like, wow, this is the best messed up, best meth ever. And it's because it's laced with fentanyl and then someday they do too much and they die. So we do have a good program in Gillum County with the funding. There are legislative things that are coming up around measure 110 fixes, my opinion. And so I would encourage you all to follow those if you're interested. Any questions?
Do you think that some of those fixes are going to be more incentive driven to get people in treatment? I mean, my experience is that it takes a crisis to even look at it and just tell them that's a good idea. You need to go and walk over and get them there. The fentanyl has been interesting, but I've been doing some recovery stuff in Powerhouse and Hermiston. And there's guys coming in up there that are there because they're absolutely scared to death, fentanyl. You have friends that died beside them. That's the driving force is they're afraid they're going to die because of fentanyl. But that's really the only incentive that seems to be out there to get them into treatment.
There's one measure that I like in particular that's addressing measure 110. And it is rolling it back so that, so that the first charge for a smaller amount looks more like a Dewey. And personally, I like that one. If that was put on the ballot, I would vote for that one. There's a few that fully measure roll it back. I will send them to you. I'll send it to you. There's one or two that completely roll it back. I would take those over nothing, over doing nothing at all. But the one that I am partial to does step it out. That's just my opinion. Thank you. So I know that it's, I know it's controversial. So I, I just think if I were a parent, I see parents out there all the time that are struggling to get their adult kids the help that they need. And I believe in free choice. We were just talking about, I was just talking about that with my 11 year old. We have free will to make our own decisions and that's beautiful. And sometimes when we get in bad relationships or we're just in a bad space, we make decisions that we wouldn't typically make. I just don't think that an 11 year old is saying to themselves, when I'm 30 years old, I want to be addicted to fentanyl and not able to hold her job. I just don't think that most people say that. So when they're 30 and they're addicted to fentanyl or methamphetamine or alcohol, which is, you know, like it's a bad drug to be addicted to, people die from it. But when they were 11, would they have wanted that for themselves where they're at? And I don't, I don't think they would. So, you know, parents and family and society wants them to be safe and get help. Wants other people around them to be safe. And sometimes we have to do some things, not because we want to do them, but because we're told to do them.
When you have the scary situations where you have the two year old that picks up a piece of oil. And then paramedics don't have a Narcan to even save them to get into the hospital.
It's, it's concerning. And a lot of the folks, Commissioner Shan was talking about it, that folks don't know that they're using fentanyl. You know, some, it's, fentanyl is scary. And so there are those that are knowingly using it, but there's a lot. It's really cheap to cut a drug with fentanyl. It's cheaper to buy fentanyl than it is to buy methamphetamine. So a drug dealer will tell you it's meth. They might actually think it's fully meth, but it's been cut with fentanyl. So the manufacturer just made a higher profit because fentanyl is so cheap, right? But they think they're buying pure meth. They're not. And or they'll cut it with, I can't remember what it, what it is. There's just a couple of cases that are hitting Oregon. It's this drug that vets use and with animals and and they have a seizure. I mean, they just, you know, they just don't know. So there's some controversy with fentanyl test strips. And I'll just state that if, and, and I know that you guys might, I might walk out of here and you might think, I don't know that she can be our CMHP director anymore. I have like, I've kind of came full circle with fentanyl test strips. Back in 2019, I would, I was like, no, I don't like that. I think it's bad. I think we're condoning drug use. If I give you a fentanyl test strip, I think I'm condoning it. Given that what I just said, most people don't want to die and many don't know that they're using fentanyl. If it were my kid who was addicted to meth, which would be horrible, completely horrible. And I knew that they weren't interested in dying, which is maybe a different conversation. Would they, would I be okay with them saying, hey, mom, I know you don't like this, but I bought these test strips so that I just want you to know that I check it every time. So, because I don't want to die and I don't want fentanyl. What would I say to that? You know, I, I think I would say, okay, well, I don't agree with you using methamphetamine. But I definitely don't want you to die. And so, okay, you know, and I just tear up just thinking about it. I mean, we're just asked, we're, you know, it's hard. It's hard to be a parent and we're dealing with stuff that, this is synthetic. Like take meth and, or take marijuana and mushrooms, even opium any day. If it's this synthetic stuff with the fentanyl, it's, they can make it so that it's very potent. And, all right, okay.
Disguising it as candy and all the other little things they do.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So our zero suicide initiative, just pleased to say that we hired someone to fill that position. And he has been out and about, Tim Hand, for his training people on QPR, question persuade, refer. Done a lot of work with counseling on access to lethal means. Working with our leadership team on some strategic objectives, working on some interventions that we're doing with people who are identified as being at medium or high risk. So really excited about some of the work that's happening there. I thought about printing that off and giving you an update, but I thought three is enough. Three's a crowd maybe. And I'm just thoughtful that you've got folks behind me. Crisis response, there's funding that Senator Wyden was successful in obtaining at the federal level. And Oregon has made some changes where they're putting some funds into, basically we're going to a two person crisis response. Won't just be a mental health professional that's responding and it'll also be somebody who has experience in addictions. The model is great. The funding doesn't quite get us there where we have two people 24/7, so we're working on that. The challenge is the people. You know, 24/7, that's hard to find somebody, I mean, we're talking about four or five people that would work in Gillum County alone. Just, you know, adding to the crisis rotation. So the staffing is a real struggle. And I think we might have a summer program in Gillum County again for some of the kiddos. So that's exciting. We're partnering with a youth or with a person who is working on their master's degree. Who wants to provide a summer program. I can talk about a lot more. I just, I feel like I need to be thoughtful about the folks behind me. Do you have any questions, concerns, complaints, anything that you heard in the community? Thank you for meeting with me, Commissioner Shan.
Questions for Kimberly from the audience, either from Zoom or.
Did I provide you with relevant information, anything you want me to bring next time? If you have any questions over anything, thanks for.
Related to any legislation that's moving through, I'm in Salem occasionally. I know this is a personal interest of Pat's too, like we're happy to weigh in, even if things are coming through at AOC or other places. About what, you know, what you're passing on to us is what you're seeing in our populations. So.
I'll send you an email. I have three asks. So the email will include the burn legislation, measure 110, so you can be watching out for that. Bridging the gap on the mobile crisis funding, it's a rule says we have to do it, but the state acknowledges that the funding that they provided gets us about half the way. Not quite the full way. So so there's that. And then the other thing is that we could provide hiring bonuses. But the law, the exception to that, that the legislature granted when COVID hit, that sunsetted in September. And now we have to be very creative in providing those. And I don't know that we're going to be able to do that, but it has been very helpful. So I am asking the legislature to extend that again, and I'll send you that right up. And thank you for any help that you might offer with that.
Happy to be here.
All right. Thank you.
Until next time. Okay, let's move on to 6.2, which is consider approval of letter of agreement with ASME. Let me just pull this up here. So just to very briefly recap, commissioners during our January 18th meeting, we had a discussion about the CDL requirements, as you might remember, and specifically how to address if we have somebody who we would like to hire for a position that requires a CDL, but does not have it, how we would address getting them trained so that they possess the CDL and are able to perform all the duties. And so we, as you guys know, actually have a candidate for the crusher equipment operator to require is a CDL. The candidate does not have one. And so we are just looking at doing a letter of agreement with ASME, allowing for a longer probationary period because we still don't know like how long it would take to get into CDL school and what the cost would be and all of that kind of stuff. So Miranda worked with Diana Moffett to come up with this letter, which if approved, we would send it over to the union. Assuming they approve as well, then we would ask the candidate to sign it. Pat, do you want to add to that?
No one.
Got it? Questions about it?
I moved to approve letter of agreement with Gillum County, actually, and employed as presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the letter of agreement with Gillum County, ASME, and the employee as presented is the further discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to 7.1, consider approval of additional part-time driver for public transportation department. Leah, do you want to do this or do you want me to do this one?
I think you can do it.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure Shanaya is not on here. I think she's out today. Okay, so Leah's new to this, but Pat probably has already heard this, is that when the pandemic hit, what we saw in our public transportation department was that a lot of our volunteers who were primarily senior, older, stopped volunteering, in part because of, for some of them age, they just decided it was time. But for others, it was the risk of potentially transporting somebody that might be sick. And so at that point back in 2020, we started thinking about transitioning more of the public transportation funds into actually hiring part-time drivers so that we knew that we had drivers on hand to be able to meet the demand for our ridership. So we started out by employing, employing two part-time drivers. When Commissioner Wilkins was here, last year, they started actually recruiting for a third one. Because the demand kept going up and especially as people were getting out and about post pandemic, a lot more demand. And so we hired, they hired a third driver. And at the time, they had actually received two acceptable candidates and one ended up withdrawing. And so they hired the one and then Shanaya has basically just kept the add up just because I think Sherry was working towards the fourth and they were just kind of waiting for the right candidate to come along. Well, Shanaya did receive an, an application from a candidate that I think she would like to run through the recruitment process and see if that would be a good fit, where we have not actually formally approved that fourth hire. And so what she is asking for is that we formally approve the fourth part-time driver. And then that will enable her to take this candidate through the recruitment. If it's a good candidate, possibly hire them. If not, keep the position advertised and, and looking. All of the funds, as a reminder, are ODOT grant funds, so there's no impact on the general fund. One thing that Shanaya and I did talk about coming into budget season is right now, it's kind of grouped into two part-time driver line items in her budget. We talked about actually just making it one line item because she, I think, will get some drivers who may say to her, like, I can give you 10 hours a week, not 19. I can drive one day a week, you know, where she, that way she has some flexibility as long as she stays within the budget parameters.
She might be put five or six on the same quarter.
Exactly. Depending on who's interested, what their level of availability is, all those kind of things. That gives her flexibility to not just have to find four people who will commit to 19 hours a week. And so I think that's where we'll move budget wise, but at this point, we haven't formally authorized a fourth person to be hired. There should be plenty of room in her budget to hire that person because some of her part-time drivers that we had already authorized, I mean, for, came on mid, mid-year and stuff like that. So should be sufficient funds to like, keep her pretty well within budget, maybe a couple thousand over, but not anything to concern about. And so the request is for us to formally approve that part-time driver. And then when we take up her budget during budget season, I think she's going to reconfigure that a little bit. So there's a little bit more flexibility in the department to be able to, to fit the schedule of all of the various people who are interested in driving.
Do you want me to make the motion?
It's in your area of responsibility.
There we go. I moved to approve the additional part-time driver position for the Gillum County Transportation Department.
I'll second.
So we moved down seconded that we approved the additional part-time driver position for Gillum County Transportation Department. Is a further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to 7.2, discussion and possible action regarding revisions to 2021, 2026 Gillum County Strategic Plan. Okay, so large picture overview, back in June 2021, so Pat would have been here about six months, I think.
We're a really extensive strategic plan at the time.
You were. I know. I know. We approved the version, the current version of our 2021, 2026 strategic plan. Over the last 18 months, I've just kind of been listening to this core, the various work sessions that we've had, partners. And back in 2021, when we put some of these things down, put and back in 2021, when we put some of these things down, particularly under goal two, we drafted them in a way that was purposely broad because I think we weren't quite sure on what the path forward was going to be. But as we've kind of discussed more, it seems like we started to sort of dial in on where our priorities are, where we think we can make the most sort of thing for the buck. And so what I thought I would do is just kind of update mostly what you have in front of you is my first take on further refining, really goal two is the major significance, I'll kind of walk through this. So under goal one, which is foster an organizational culture where people want to work and do business, I just added, as you can see, invest in the promotion and professional development so that we're, when we have an opportunity to promote within the county, that we're looking for opportunities to do that. Now, we're also supporting our staff and getting the skills that they need to sort of move their way up through management. So I added that, just to kind of clarify that a little bit. Goal two is really the promote growth and prosperity part is the one that has the most significant changes. What I did under strategy one, which is the broadband one, is I, now that we know we have a better idea of where the funding's coming from, what that needs to look like, I kind of structured, restructured that strategy to really kind of zone in on what we need to do next. And so the language that I am suggesting here is to position Gillum County to successfully compete for broadband infrastructure grants by working collaboratively with local, state, and federal partners to develop a shovel-ready plan to expand affordable, reliable, high-speed internet access to every residence and business in Gillum County. Because it seems like at this point, when we first started, we weren't sure there was even going to be funding, we're trying to do it. Now we know that actually the goal is to go after these federal dollars. And so I feel like we can really zero in on what we actually need to be doing here. Number two, which is the housing one, I felt like that at this point was broad enough that could capture like some of the development things we've been talking about. That one may require further refinement after we kind of figure out exactly how this is going to look. But for now, I just let that one untouched. Number three is a new one, we did not include early education access. When we did this original one, I feel like that was an oversight on my part, and now that we've kind of talked about its significance on economic development, I felt like it should actually be in specifically called out. So I'm just suggesting language that says that we develop and implement an early education access roadmap to ensure there is an affordable slot available for every Gillum County child, it just zero to five who needs one. And so that's big picture goals, but I think will give us sort of a direction on actually coming up with a plan. For number four, actually just, you'll see at the bottom, there was where we had sort of the placeholder for the comprehensive economic development enhancement plan. I basically moved that up one to number four and really tried to dial into some of the projects we specifically have identified at the court as priorities. So, and the way I termed it was ensure Gillum County is investment-ready for private sector to come in by funding infrastructure, infrastructure projects on publicly-owned industrial lands, redesignating the Gillum County Enterprise Zone, and then building upon successful initiatives with Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce to retain and expand existing small businesses and encourage entrepreneurship. So just kind of trying to dial in a little bit more to Pat's point, I think back when we were passing this about really wanting to get into some specifics. I tried to sort of call these out because these seem to be the three that really have kind of risen to the top in our discussions about this. And then the fifth one is unchanged, which is serving a supportive, resourceful role to our cities, schools, other taxing districts, and local organizations to help improve livability and address various structural difficulties. Goal number three, I made one small suggestion, which was we have in here as strategy number five, adopting a 20-year comprehensive county facilities plan. I noted when I was looking through here that in the road plan, we said that we would review that annually, and so I just added language that we would review the facilities plan annually, just so we don't make it and then never look at it. You know, like if we say we're going to review it every year, then that allows us probably around budget time to decide, okay, what's next on the facilities plan?
Some triggers in place to identify it's time for review.
Well, I think we would task that with our staff to figure out, and I suggest that it would probably happen around the time we start thinking about budgeting, so that we're, that's part of the trigger.
Yeah, I think it's good to do an annual review, but let's not forget to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I read it and said, we have a 20-year comprehensive.
It's not developed, it's still on the list, the to-do list. But yeah, I mean, we would, I think part of the goal this year is to get, actually get that dialed in, and then to have it annually reviewed. Hopefully even towards like December, January for that review, just probably gets budgeted for any projects that we would want to do that year. Yeah, because then we would be able to identify, okay, we're doing this next, start to get cost estimates back, and then hopefully set aside funds when the budget.
So you'll probably use it guiding, using this as a guide for that one?
Yes. And then the last one was just kind of cleaning up some language under goal number four, which is encourage collaboration, cooperation, communication between each of the communities that are part of Gillum County. Our strategy number three was improve accessibility at Gillum County personnel and services for all citizens, and we had included through increased outreach efforts. I just put that off because I felt like with the office that we have in Arlington and other things, it's not just outreach, it's also presence. And so I just kind of eliminated that, I don't think it changes the intent. I just thought it was a little cleaner, that it's not just outreach, it's also presence. And, you know, the fact that we have Miranda down there two days a week, and people, you know, were meeting down there every other meeting, like those kinds of things we're already implementing.
I'd have been down there with the mayor on Sunday, and then Cory with the porter on the porch, he can plan on Monday, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so these were kind of my, I mean, it was twofold, I think, the conversation. One was to say like, hey, I've been tinkering with this, what do you think? And two, also to maybe have a discussion, because we haven't reviewed where we've come so far, that it might also be helpful to kind of talk through some of these and say like, okay, here's what we've done so far, and maybe start to come up with some next steps. I don't know if we want to do that today on the next steps, or you want us to bring this, maybe consider approving this and then bring it back? And do a review, or how?
I mean, for me, I really liked the fact that we've gone back and looked at this and we've dialed it in better. I mean, it was pretty open-ended, but I also think I've learned that having an extremely detailed one would probably cause not looking at it at all.
Yeah.
And this is a pretty good tool.
Well, and it's not going to be in the more comprehensive one.
Some of these that have more details, yeah, so like, for instance, the early education access roadmap will have, here's our point, yeah, yeah, our broadband plan, well, here's the plan kind of thing. The other thing that Delaney and I have been kicking around, because we want to make sure that this stays front and center, is we are considering, and I wanted to get your input on this, on our actual agenda item briefings, we are considering putting a line in that just says, basically, is this connected with a strategic plan goal? And having staff have to go into the plan and actually identify which thing that it's connected with. If not, it's not, you know, they just put MA, but in that way, it's just a reminder, one, it's going to force our staff to actually look at this plan on a regular basis, because we'll send it back to them and say, hey, we're on the strategic plan, is this aligned? Again, if it's not, it's not a big deal, but then I think for us, it's also a reminder, and for the public, also a reminder, we are talking about this because this was what we said we were going to do. And that, and that I think will cause, one, it'll cause Delaney and I to have this up like on our computers every time we go to do briefings every other week, and also cause our staff to actually think about why they're putting things forward, and does this fit within the strategic vision that we've outlined? A sort of one small step to try to integrate this more.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'd be in favor of trying to get this approved and then bringing it back.
Okay, to actually do a review and see where we are.
Yeah, because I think so many times people put a lot of work into a strategic plan, and then it goes, sits on a shelf.
Yeah.
Nobody looks at it.
Yeah, well, like, for instance, you know, when we were looking through the here, some of the things, like, one of the things we said we were going to do is start hosting annual roundtable discussions, right? Well, I feel like the quarterly things that we've started with before, kind of check that box, you know, like.
Which, which reminds me, while you bring that up.
Yeah.
February for that, we did November.
Probably February, March.
It's like mid-quarter.
Yeah. It's a meeting-heavy time right now, so that's why I was kind of waiting until the court reaching out and figuring out those things, when everybody starts to windle down a little bit, because we've been, January was very meeting-heavy for a lot of us, so.
I like to see, just keep it in the middle of the quarter so that if something happens, but try to keep it in the middle of the quarter, so it doesn't escape the quarter.
Great, yeah, and so we'll get that on the schedule, the next joint meeting. I think we'll plan, would you guys like us to do a work session to go through these? Or would you like us to put it just as a regular agenda item, to kind of do an annual review of where we are and where we need to go next on some of these? Do you have a preference?
I mean, I'd probably rather do a work session, but maybe we can do it.
Okay, I wrote down, schedule work session, because I figured that's.
I think it's, a word session helps you work on it rather than try to think and prepare crowded into a meeting and.
So probably what we would do is we'll probably tack it on to the beginning of one of our meetings, like we do, and start it at nine, and then do an hour and then get as far as we can, and if we need a second work session later, then we'll schedule a second work session.
So somebody wanted to go ahead and move to accept these.
I would love it if you guys are on board with the language.
I moved to adopt the revised 2021, 2026 Gillum County Strategic Plan as presented.
I'll second.
So moved down seconded that we adopt the revised 2021, 2026 Gillum County Strategic Plan as presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries? Okay, let's go on to seven point three, discussion regarding municipal and nonprofit support proposal from Kelly Nonprofit Consulting. I am really excited about this. So we have, as you guys, as Pat knows, and Leah, if you've been going back to old court meetings, you know, we have been racking our brains and trying to figure out how to structure a way to bring capacity to our nonprofits in particular, some of our municipal governments, to try to go out and compete for grant dollars. How do we do that? Do we have a grant writer in here, do we hire someone out yonder? And how do we figure out how to meet everybody's needs and in a way that's going to be cost-effective for us and work for each individual nonprofit? So, last fall, I happened to attend a grant workshop that Rural Development Initiative was hosting. And during the, during the workshop, I came across this company called Kelly Nonprofit Consulting. Basically, they are an Oregon-based firm that is really focused in on making nonprofits as strong as they can be, basically from the ground up. And so I reached out to them, and in your packet, you'll see there's a whole list of all the different services that they can provide. So I reached out to the founder and just said, hey, we've been kicking around like, how could the counties help bring capacity into our nonprofits? And started with this idea that the county could partner with Kelly Consulting and basically sponsor consulting hours, where Kelly Consulting could go directly and meet directly with the boards of the participating nonprofits, basically do an assessment, do you have your bylaws in order? Do you have, how are you doing your financials, are those all? And basically, do an assessment of how, quote, funding-ready, which is like one of the nonprofit terms that they use, each of our nonprofits locally are to go after and compete for grant dollars. And so for each one, they would come in, basically identify where current weaknesses are, and come up with a plan to mitigate those. So for some of our organizations who are maybe further along, they may be able to skip ahead to like, hey, we just need to address a few small things, and then we can move right into like identifying who your funders are, helping you create some of these template documents that are, you have to submit for every kind of grant application, and then also kind of starting in the process of like writing and refining grant agreements or grant applications. For some of our others that are maybe new or are missing kind of some of the fundamentals, they would start from the beginning, basically, and say, okay, what do your bylaws look like? What are your, what are your sort of procedures financially that you're doing? Are you using best practices that say for family foundation is going to look at? And that if you don't even have this, you're not even going to be in the pool. And basically, working with them, the way we've structured it is over a three-year period to bring all of our nonprofits into a place where they are funding-ready, and where they know where their potential donors are. They have capacity and tools to be able to competitively pay for grants, all of the things that we've kind of been talking about. But this company can bring in an entire team in, they've got financial experts, grant writers, all of the things. Anyway.
I don't want to target any entities, but Arlington Daycare would just be a great tool for them to.
Absolutely, all of our childcare's could benefit from this.
Did anybody from down there reach out to either one of you?
And, and so like we talked about, you know, like I asked the childcare center here, because they actually, they were part of this Rural Development Initiative thing, and as part of that, the participants got a couple of one-on-one hours with the consultants here. And so I asked, like, what was your experience, the county, if the county paid for additional hours, how would you use them? What they think, and they said absolutely was well worth it. So even, the thing I like about this is, are folks who are really struggling or are brand-new to this, I think Kelly could start them from the very beginning and walk them through step-by-step. Here's what you need to have in place, here's your financial systems, your controls, here are the kinds of policies you need to have in place, ethics policies, all kinds of things that normal functioning boards kind of take for granted, but that actually takes some time to get like, get up and get running. But then for our folks who are further ahead, they can immediately use them to start going after dollars. And I feel like, in terms of where we put our SIP discretionary dollars in particular, I feel like the phrase that keeps coming to mind is the, the whole teach a man to fish versus feeding him, you know? And I feel like in our competitive grants, we've been doling out fish meals year by year, right? And I feel like this is the opportunity to actually say, we're going to bring real capacity in to make sure that you can compete with everybody else in the state that's going after these dollars. It's not to say we won't completely back out of funding them, but that they really can leverage effectively these outside dollars so that we can start being the closing, the gap funding rather than the first one in. And in some cases, maybe they're not even coming to us anymore because they're being so successful in going after outside dollars. I just feel like long-term, in terms of investment, if we could come out of this in three years and have every single one of our nonprofits basically doing, adopting best practices, knowing exactly who their fundraisers are, I feel like that's going to pay dividends for years for us. And so anyway, I, basically today, the idea is just to say, do you like where we're going with this? Is this something that you think maybe is a viable idea? And then if so, is Kelly the right people to go with? So far, they're the only ones I've found that really specialize in this. And if we decided it's Kelly and we decide we like this concept, what do we need to do to sort of refine it so that we feel comfortable? And like, what's, what's my marching orders basically on next steps?
Well, I think it's, in my example, I think it's a really good example. Who, I mean, I've kind of conversationed, I've had, I'm disappointed I haven't reached out because of, I've been a little bit of a threat, it might be hard to get grants this year if we don't, you guys don't get connected up. And obviously, we don't want to lose what little bit of daycare we've got in Arlington. But something's got to happen down there, and somebody's got to start talking to somebody to. So this is a perfect solution, or at least a tool, to try to get them in a place that are healthier.
Well, and even the places that are healthier than that, it'll still, there's enough different little things that they can work on, because I'll, there's probably a lot of them that don't really have a strategic plan or a. A strategic plan or a.
And Kelly work can work too with our, some of our municipalities that we work with, some of our special districts and things like that, so this doesn't even have to just apply to those that we get. Through our nonprofits, we could offer this to our special districts to maybe help develop plans for them as well. And when I talk to them, basically I said, I would like to be able to offer anyone that the county has funded. Five years, any of our partners to be able to access them, and they're going to be. Probably their wheelhouse is definitely more in the nonprofits, but I think for. Our municipalities that are operating the public space, you know, we already have pretty prescriptive like public meeting laws, boards, all of those things are already pretty well laid out. But where they may be able to be helpful is, here are the ten grant opportunities that you may not know about, that you actually could fit well in. And yes, we can review your grant application and give you some feedback before you submit it and maybe give some pointers on. How you craft a, you know, description of your um project and things like that, so I feel like those kind of fundamental like. Grant writing stuff, um. I think for municipalities, it would be less about organizational kinds of things and more about the nitty-gritty, like here's some funders out here who are looking to invest in this kind of a project. And connecting, because one of the, one of the things that I thought was particularly interesting about them is some of the philanthropic. Um, people actually use them to craft their grant programs, and so. Kelly actually, they know what the funder is actually looking for because they've helped them actually craft their grant program. And so like, for instance, when I was talking to them about childcare, um, in particular, I gave that as an example. They were like, well, you know that there is like two or three grant programs that are going to be launched, and they were naming who's going to fund them. And they knew it because it was on their other client side, where they were helping the people who were actually going to be funding the grants, and they're like, as soon as those release, we'll let you know. Kind of, so even that connection was very helpful to know that those were coming. Um, and that they, as soon as we plug in our childcare providers, we'll have that direct link into funders, um, so.
So even what about some of the departments within the courthouse, like the transportation department and. Grants that might be available for senior services or even the weed department, or they use that?
We, I think, we didn't broach the county using them, but that's definitely something we can go back to. I think like the fundamental things in terms of like reviewing a grant application. What they're looking for, keywords, like those kinds of things, I feel like they would be able to do that for us as well.
Accessibility word.
Yeah, um, so I feel like it might, but I would want to explore that with them a little bit more. We would probably do a separate contract if the county wanted to do it just for our internal departments. Um, because what we're talking about here is basically we are upfront buying a number of hours and they're allotted to each of the participating entities. And so they can run through them, you know, some of our ones that maybe need less help. May not run through them as quickly, you know, they may use them for one grant application and then maybe they hold and roll over into the next year if they don't have a need. Um, some of our folks who need a lot more handholding might blow through, you know, their first year's allotment for six months, in which case, you know, they may. Um, so I would, I think, want to talk to her about separating if the county wants to do its own contract for our staff, like making sure that we're not taking. Those hours out of uh of circulation for the nonprofits.
It makes sure we're not leaving grants sitting on the table, but.
Exactly, yeah. And, okay, so it sounds like consensus is that this sounds like a good idea, on the right track. Um, we likely, is there anything about this in terms of? The amount that we're talking about for hours, any of those things, the thing I kind of like about this is we're reserving hours. And so if our folks come in lower, I think we can talk to her about just rolling those over. You know, so we reserve the hours the first year, somebody only uses a hundred of their hours, those get rolled over into the next year, and so we pay a little bit less the next year, basically. Um, but we're really opening this up to like anybody that we funded in the last five years. Um, including like our food pantries who aren't necessarily coming in through our competitive grants, but we're funding in other places. Um, obviously, like our childcare summit spring, some of the, you know, the arts council. And some of our regulars that are coming in, the historical society, I just feel like, um, we've got a pretty good group, um.
So have you done any analysis on what a budget figure would be?
So the the amount that they, that she quoted us. Yeah, page ten. So total cost for three years would be just shy of a million dollars. So about um, three hundred to four hundred thousand a year. Um, but again, that's going to be dependent on how many people we have raised their hands. So maybe nonprofits who say things but no thanks, unfortunately, um, and how many hours each of them actually end up using. Um, so some of them, I, I mean, I could see like. The Condon uh Scholarship Foundation, for instance, has been around for so long. I'm not sure, like, I feel like they probably have their bylaws and things pretty well dialed in. Um, they may not, they may only need a few hours and decide that that that's enough, that they they don't want to use this longer. Um, whereas like Arlington childcare may need more, um, so. My thought process is that we could look at diverting some of the money that we would normally run through our competitive grants program. And setting this aside and saying to the nonprofits, this is how we're going to be supporting you, is by providing these hours. Um, so that you can go out and compete for grants.
Which will help them down the road.
Just kind of, though, they'll a little better bring them up.
Okay, so I will ask specifically about county offices. Um, using it, we'll also get some clarity for our municipalities in case there's some interest.
And aren't you really going to, to really kind of figure out where you're going to be, find out what your entities want to do?
Yeah, I think we can do some outreach and try to get a head count on who would be interested. Um, they did tell us, for instance, they already, like Condon Arts Council is already a client of theirs, and so we talked about, okay, well. We could pick up the cost, like they've already, their board is already committed to working with them, so maybe we just sponsor a number of hours basically for them. Um, and so, you know.
Who's, what did you say is doing that?
The Condon Arts Council is already working with them.
How did they get for that?
No idea, somehow they found them. Um, that was the only one I think that they, she told me they were already working with within Gillum County. Um, so I don't know, uh, maybe Jessica Bates, she has a lot of connections through. Yeah, they're headquartered in Portland, but they have a remote staff, and so they're all over the state. Um, okay, so I will.
Part of that core leadership.
So I'll um, I'll ask these questions and come back with a refined proposal. Assuming that we would want to move forward, I think, um, the timelines have us sort of like setting up the parameters. This current fiscal year, and so, so that our folks can hit the ground running come July one. Um, so I think there's sufficient money in the SIP discretionary where we could cover the hours that it'll take for Delaney and I to work with her to. Kind of set up with a program and look like, um, but we can get more clarity on that, obviously, before we actually spend dollars, we'll need an approval of the actual contract with them. Um, but then I think when budget time comes around, we would just plan on setting aside a portion of probably discretionary funds out of SIP. Um, for this specific program and and then um planning on it hopefully being up through year. Um, and in the meantime, we can also start getting head counts of who might be interested, um, because that'll drive costs as well.
Take a little arm twisting.
Some of them, um, I honestly think we're about to talk about the grants, uh, it would not. Give me any heartburn at all to make that a condition of receiving funds if you're coming in for operational funds.
Well, we're trying to, I mean, if you're working towards sustainability and highlighting SIP funds and. I mean, it's all part of the conversation.
Yeah. Okay, so more to come on that, um, we'll we'll reschedule it once I have a little bit more information, a little bit more refined plan for how this would look. Um, okay, next one. Right on to uh discussion and possible action revisions to Gillum County Operational Support and Capital Investment Grant Guidelines. Let me just preface this by saying, um, that I'm asking you commissioners to take a pretty big leap, um. In changing for the next, let's say, two to three fiscal years. How we are prioritizing the investments that we are making. So as you guys know, we just approved and updated a strategic plan. In goal two in particular, we identify several key areas where we think we can make the most impact in terms of the livability of our communities. And as we've started talking about all these housing developments, the childcare centers that we need to either expand or build. Um, fiber money that's coming down that may require a pretty hefty match from us to actually secure. Um, like our predecessors did a pretty good job of of setting aside some of this discretionary money. But we were counting up on the housing developments alone, are, if we decided, hey, we're all going to do it on the same year, like. That's thirty million dollars of investment we're talking about, we are not carrying those kinds of reserves in our budget. Um, and so what Delaney and I have been talking about is, okay, is there a way with our competitive grants? To encourage some of our community partners to get in alignment with these things that we've already identified are sort of crucial for our communities. Um, and so in what we did was rework both the capital investment and the operational support. To say for the next two to three fiscal years, we are going to fund these specific types of projects. And or entities that are providing these types of services, so, um. Let me start with, actually, let's start with the capital first. So the proposed um change here would be that. We are only funding projects that are furthering goal two. Um, of our strategic plan, so broadband, we know that's going to be our own thing that we're doing, so left that one out. The other ones are housing, early education access. Ensuring Gillum County is investment-ready and specifically looking at our infrastructure projects on industrial lands. And then serving in a supportive role to our partners, and so. Basically, what we're suggesting is that if it's not housing, if it's not expansion of early ed and facilities. If it's not industrial projects, um, the only other thing that we would fund is if. A partner came in and said, hey, look, we've secured seventy-five percent of the funding for this. School upgrade, whatever it is, that we would agree, we would allow into the pool sort of gap funding, like closing for projects that would otherwise. Um, that might not otherwise be built because they just need our last sort of money in basically to close. Um, this is a huge change, this would be like telling a lot of our folks who fund regularly our school districts. Um, we need you to sit this one out for a couple of years, unless you're funding teacher housing, which come on in for that. Um, we're not going to be addressing your building concerns, and so those are our two major ones that we fund regularly out of this program. So I went ahead and already met with the superintendents to say, hey, what would this do to your facilities plans? We met with Larry yesterday, he said this won't impact us at all. Um, their board is focused on housing, if they come to ask for us for money, they were planning on asking for housing money anyway. And he doesn't have anything on his punch list that is pressing, that couldn't wait for two years. The uh Condon superintendent sent us a punch list of things that they're working through. I'm a little confused about it, honestly, because when we looked through them, it looked like the county had already secured, had already promised funding in previous grant cycles for them. And so I'm kind of wondering if maybe he's sending us the list of things that are still yet to be completed but have already been funded. Um, so one was like an HVAC upgrade that I know we funded.
Yeah, we funded that.
Yeah, another one, what? Which we just funded last fiscal year. Yeah, so. Yeah, we did the, but they didn't ask for, he didn't send us a roof punch list, but that was one that we completely did. Yeah, so there were a couple of small ones, like, for instance, um, I think from OSA work departments, they need to upgrade their. Um, their scoreboards in the gym, they need a shot clock or something, I don't know. Shot clock is coming. Um, but we told them actually our special projects grants.
It's a requirement.
So it's it's stuff like.
Unlimited funds into schools.
It's little things like that where we thought, okay, well, we can, we actually have another mechanism to fund those, which is our special projects. And so I asked him, like, if we told you for two years, like, we can't fund any building upgrades, what would that do? And he said, he told us that there was nothing on their punch list that that is so crucial that it cannot wait. Um, okay.
They're our biggest.
Between the two of them, we give out a half, a million dollars between the two annually, so that would be a significant bite out of housing. Um, just by having them out of the pool or partnering them with them on teacher housing, which would be the ideal thing. And so what I'm hoping is by saying, like, here's what we're funding. We get people to start thinking like, do I have something related to these priorities that has been on my list as a board? And like. Yes, partner on the things that we've identified as priorities, just for two, three years. Let us kind of like start to address housing, start to do these things that are important, and then we can go back to funding more, a more broad range, I think. But if we just kind of feel, are feeling like we have got to start dialing in, if these are truly the things that are going to be essential for moving the needle on economic development. We can't be like chasing squirrels all over, we got to focus on these things, and I think, um, at least what we're hearing from our. Largest funders, we talked to the city as well, um, because they're typically in there and, um. As long as we're funding infrastructure and things like that, which we wrote into the guidelines, um, it sounded like the city was. Yes, as it's related to housing, that the city was on board. So those are usually our three biggest asks between those three, all three indicated like they're in general, I'm sure the school.
So when you say that, we're talking both school districts and city Condon, because I don't think Arlington's ever asked for anything.
They've never asked for a capital investment.
They are probably going to start going down that road, um, just from some conversations I've had.
And so my, one of the reasons like we talked, we're saying this two, three-year thing is because the strategic plan will end, the current one is set to sunset in twenty twenty-six. So kind of do this grant program through twenty twenty-six, and then when the strategic plan is being looked at again and revised for the next five-year plan. The grant program is then realigned to kind of match those or open back up based off of that.
Could you repeat what you said about, I mean, we know where we've got reserves and when you were looking at, you said something about the thirty million.
Yeah, so if you start to add up. What estimates for, say, doing the grade school, the fairway? The whatever we're going to call Arlington Heights or whatever the property is about, assuming that that we win all in on all of those. Second stories if we went on all of that, like, the price tag is approaching thirty million, um, between those projects.
Estimate in there for fiber.
And then fiber, what we, what we think, we know, is that the ARPA dollars that are going to come out, the state has already indicated. Will be in twenty million-dollar chunks. So when our consultant comes in and next meeting, I'm assuming he's going to tell us that it's going to be more than twenty million. Um, and so we're likely going to need to close the funding gap, like, we can get the first twenty million basically from the state, and then we may have to come up with. I don't know, anywhere from five to ten million to close the gap. Um, and then our childcare facilities, I don't know what a new facility in Arlington would cost, but I met with Jeff on the Condon one. And he, with current, what he's saying with current building construction cost, he said, realistically, you're looking at one point three to one point six. For the expansion here, so a new building down there, I'm thinking of probably looking two to three million. Um, so between all of those, thirty million for housing, up to ten million for fiber, another. Five for childcare facilities, fifty-five million. Um, we don't, we're not carrying that kind of money in reserves, um, obviously. Probably, yeah, I think there's about, um, I want to say there's maybe like twelve in the SIP and roughly around that much in the host keys. So maybe twenty, twenty-five, uh, maybe a little bit more, there's some, there's some that we are storing in like our. Maybe a little bit more. There's some, there's some that we are storing in like our capital projects too for rainy day.
We're in a drain because we're coming down every year.
So the thought process is rather than give out, out three and a half million to every good idea that comes, we say, no, let's put that three and a half million. As a down payment on some of these priorities. And even better, if we have partners who are also kicking in, say twenty five percent of the project. So the other thing that we did in here is we're suggesting that. Currently, the cap on the special projects is at twenty thousand. We're suggesting that we bump that up to thirty. Which we don't have the special projects in here. This is just sort of. So that for some of those folks who have smaller capital projects, where they would normally be coming to us out of this grant fund, they have another place to go. So if the school district has a bite sized chunk of something they want to take on, they have a place to go ask for funding and they can move that piece for a new scoreboard, for instance.
And we would only increase it to thirty for capital for like capital investment type projects under the special product screen. If it's other than that, it would still be the twenty and below.
Yeah, so events and stuff would still be that twenty. The other thing that we did. Was to try to incentivize people to come to the table is we adjusted the match fund requirements. So for housing development and industrial lands, normally that would have been a thirty five percent match. We're suggesting a twenty five percent. For early education projects, we are suggesting to actually be ten, just to try to get. Because they are, our partners who are likely to build those are not operating on very. Good margins, as you know, we're funding them on the operational cost. And so getting them across the finish line on funding, I think is important. For the other capital projects, the ones that we're bringing in sort of the gap funding, we're asking partners to have seventy five percent. Of the funding secured elsewhere, basically. So we're doing literally, we're the last money in. On those, so that we don't have people saying like, well, you fund seventy five, we'll go chase the other twenty five percent later kind of thing. Cause I still want to fund those, but I, if they can find money for it outside of here, like, let's encourage them to do that. It's kind of been the philosophy. The other thing we talked about for this one in particular is. We were leaning towards, because this is a change, actually having this be a fall grant this year. Normally, we would open it up in the spring. But we're not sure that people have enough time to pivot into thinking about what a housing project would look like. Yeah. So originally, we were thinking, okay, let's open it up in the fall. And do one grant cycle in the fall, because we would normally do this one spring and fall. But I'm kind of rethinking that. What I'm thinking instead for this one in particular. Is to make it, make it a rolling application. So people who are ready, you know, like the city in the.
Really good idea.
Are moving ahead, they kind of know, and when they're ready, they can come. And our childcare facilities probably, they may not even come to us until next spring.
You're not gonna have that many of them to deal with.
Exactly. I feel like we can.
Really important when they do come up.
I feel like we can process those expeditiously and that we can do it at a rolling basis until the money runs out, basically. And then tell them they're gonna need to wait until the next funding year is reappropriated. But for this one in particular, I feel like rather than do a set timeline, we just do a rolling so that when, when partners are ready. To ask for funding that they can submit their applications and not have to wait, or if they miss the window, not have to wait six months to be able to.
Basically, this has to do with nonprofit, then we gotta still have her to. You know, that's gonna actually apply for that grant. Or the I N R C D C or. Whatever, or maybe all. So those, okay. Something private developers can come and get their hands on that going through another.
They would need to go through another entity. But I, I honestly think that this one is probably gonna be like one offs, like the school district. Coming in and saying, we need two units. Help us, you know, come in for part of the cost, we'll come in for the rest, let's build two units for our teachers kind of thing. Or. I don't know. Condon Arts Council, if you're listening, you have a house behind your theater that maybe you come in as a nonprofit and say, hey, help us. Get this house up and livable kind of thing. Like, there may be some that we're not even thinking about, or they have like a one off property that is not livable, that they might take advantage of this. And actually make this a priority upfront. Yeah, the chamber potentially could come in and partner with private businesses even if they wanted to, if the chamber had an interest in that. And they could come in and apply for the grants and then work through with private, private businesses who need workforce development. So. I think that there's still some avenues potentially for private if they're partnering with public.
So, okay.
So. That's on the operate, or the capital. Thoughts on the general idea? Am I upsetting the apple cart too much?
I don't think so, because I think, I mean. We got, we have to look into the future here. And we need to accomplish something when we do that. It's hard to do without a plan or a way to get there. We can't just be open armed to any idea that comes along. So. Trying to direct that down some channels, I think is a good idea.
And kind of one of the things that got us started talking about this too is as these funds start to sunset. Making sure we're using them to the best of our abilities during the time while we have them still.
Around trying to build tax base with it and, you know, things that return in another way maybe, but.
I think those were the major.
We're spending, we're spending reserves to balance the budget at this point, which is troubling as hell to me. When, when, when a project, turbine project farm goes into the tax roll. Comes out of the SIS agreement and basically discretionary funds around sixty five percent of. SIS funds that came to the county's discretionary. Seventeen, I think, is what goes into the county seventeen percent. How usable is that? I mean, just from the general fund and help balance the budget, is that?
So it would go into the general fund, it would cover that, that doesn't preclude the court from. Setting up funds for other priorities. And we could always continue to have economic development funds and things, we would just. Right now, we're transferring funds from the SIP into the general fund and so. You could transfer them from the general fund into. The flow of money would be reversed, basically, in the direction it comes in, instead of coming in directly.
It's not like it all goes away, it's just with, with. Utilizing those funds to balance today that there may not be any that are good enough.
Well, exactly, yeah. Okay, so. It sounds like we might be on the right track for the capital investment. Am I?
That's a good plan going forward.
So what I think we'll do is do a little bit of revision on the grant cycle piece, because right now it's written as one application. I think we'll just make it a rolling. And then Delaney was also going to tackle a revised application that covers like the changes, basically. And I am planning on going to the Condon's awards meeting tonight to talk about. Here's where I think this is going and explain kind of why to the board so that they can kind of see like, we're not cutting you off forever. This is just like, we would like you, if you're gonna be doing stuff like. Focus. Help us on childcare, help us on housing, because there's some good synergy there.
Well, it's not a big problem, Catherine, that's your priorities anyway.
And broadband, so we're right in, check, check, check. And on the. Operational. We basically did the same thing. So what we said in here was that we would fund three priority areas. One is housing providers. You're wondering who's the housing provider around here who might be taking money from us, Summit Springs. They're the ones who are typically in, we would count that as housing, obviously, senior housing. Early education providers or childcares to come in for operational funds. And then we left in healthcare providers, even though that is not tracking with our, our own strategic plan. We just felt like that was sort of an essential community service. In order to be functioning. And so we left, for instance, we left open the door for our health districts to come in if they needed funds. So the folks that we typically fund, or we funded last year that would be kicked out would be the Historical Society. Condon, Condon Arts Council, CASA is in there, the school district, but only for their college program. Anybody else? It was a one time, they said in their application, this is the only time they're gonna come see us. And normally, I think they're funded by a Oregon Community Foundation grant that they didn't get last year. And so they asked us to provide some emergency funding. But my hope is that they're gonna be back with their regular funders. So, and then Condon Arts Council had told us in their application last year that it was gonna be a one time deal.
So the Historical Society is one that's kind of been used for this and that.
My hope is, though, that if we can get them some capacity dollars through the program we just talked about. There is money out there for operating Historical Society. It's counted as education and a lot of the funders that count museums as part of that. For operations and like I just found a grant from Oregon Community Foundation where they. They've started shifting to actually providing operational grants, which is unique for funders. Thirty thousand dollars for entities that are in rural areas that can demonstrate they are meeting community needs in certain areas. One of which is arts and culture. Thirty thousand dollars is more than they ask for us from. Exactly. So I feel like it's just having, doing a little bit of handholding with our folks who would normally be in there.
Someplace where Kelly could help them.
Exactly. They would come in, help identify the replacement funding, basically, for what they're not getting from us. And in addition, would get everything else that they need to up to speed on financials or norms, all that kind of stuff. So that's kind of why I would like the two to be married as they go together, so that we're not saying to like the Historical Society, sorry. No funding and also no resources. I'd like to be able to say, we're not funding you, but we're gonna give you this great resource.
So now, when you go back to Kelly. And you're offering. Them. Your, since we're taking away possibly some grant. Funding that we would have done, but offering them that.
So we're saying.
There's no real way to tie that they mandatory need to use Kelly if they're not getting.
Correct. I think what I would say to the Historical Society is, we're not gonna fund you in a grant. We're gonna fund you in capacity over here for hours to go chase money, basically. Like, we're gonna give you the tools that you need to go compete with funders outside of here.
Yeah, long run.
Exactly, exactly. And. Let's see, the other things that I wanted to just highlight in here, because they are relevant in the draft guidelines. If we stuck some eligibility criteria, some extra eligibility criteria, and I wanted to flag for you and get feedback. We said for successful, successful housing provider applicants, our expectation is they have to be in compliance with our relevant federal, state and local laws and regulations. Before we release money. The hefty ones are the early education ones, and this is to try to get our partners to actually go after outside funding that we know exists. So first one must be in compliance with our relevant state of Oregon regulations and licensure requirements, kind of a no brainer. Number two, must accept employment related daycare subsidies from the state of Oregon within sixty days of requesting the release of funds. Arlington in particular, looking at their numbers and what the state charges, probably don't even need our grants if they would accept this. They wouldn't even need to come to us, but they continue to resist that. And so we'd like to make that a condition of them receiving any funds is that they don't leave those funds on the table. Number three is they have to set tuition rates at a level equal to or higher than ERDC subsidy rate within sixty days. And, but they can use our grant funds to provide tuition scholarships to families that are coming in in private pay. So. This is really in the weeds, but it is relevant. So the state of Oregon for a zero to three slot. For employment related daycare. So the DHS subsidy for parents to be able to go to work, they can receive a subsidy. I believe for zero to three, that subsidy is fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollars a slot. Okay, so fifteen hundred dollars a slot the state will provide.
So fifteen hundred dollars a slot over how much time?
Per month. Yes. So. In Condon, the tuition rate, because I have a child in that classroom, is seven hundred and fifty dollars per slot. Because that's what the board here has said is acceptable, affordable for a family, okay? The state rules say that you cannot accept more subsidy than what you are charging your families.
Oh, that's what you were talking about, okay.
So the childcare cannot charge the state more than seven hundred and fifty per slot in the zero to three room. Even though the state provides fifteen hundred. So basically, they're leaving half on the table. So what the Condon Early Learning Center has done is they have boosted all of their tuition rates to match the ERDC subsidy rates. So technically, the tuition rate to be in the zero to three room is at fifteen hundred. They use the county funds to buy down to seven fifty. And so that allows them to access all of the state funding for all of their slots. And what we would be asking Arlington to do is the same, set the rate where the state is. And then use the county's funds to buy down for people who do not qualify for these subsidies to make it affordable. So that they're not leaving state money on the table, basically. And I asked the childcare center here, like, has that worked? Has the state had any pushback? And they said, no, they, they completely accept that the county can provide tuition reimbursement rates as a benefit that we provide. And I gave, I gave Jimmy basically like language that said, this is the county's expectation, is that we're not subsidizing state slots. We're subsidizing private.
I'm missing something in math. I guess it's, so they were getting seven, or said they were getting seven fifty because they didn't. Now they're getting fifteen hundred, so they're getting seven fifty more, but they buy back down to seven fifty.
So only for the parents who don't qualify for ERDC.
With county money, but they've gained seven fifty in funding.
Or the ERDC slot, just for the ERDC slots. So in any mix of classroom, like say that the zero to three room right now. Would might, might have like one or two ERDC slots, maybe two to three families that are paying privately. And then maybe like. In this case, I think they have six early head start slots, but it's a mix. So it's like, you've got three or four different funding streams that are coming in, basically. And so Janine is like, basically, trying to maximize every. From each source coming in. And so, but I will say like that fifteen hundred the state is providing doesn't cover the cost to actually provide the slot. It is, it is way more than the private here can provide, but about. Seven hundred dollars short of what they actually need to provide the slot.
That's the math that I'm missing.
Yeah. So we're advocating on the state side to increase these ERDC subsidies to actually cover costs. Which means that as, as the state catches up, like our providers are gonna actually start covering costs. But, yeah, that's, that's where the math is kind of sticky. But for like Arlington right now, literally thousands of dollars are being left on the table. And then the sad thing as well, which we're trying to convey to the Arlington childcare, is that those families who actually qualify are overpaying for their care. Because if you're truly like working minimum wage, they should be qualifying and. Right now, they're paying, I don't know, three, four hundred dollars a month, whatever it is for care, they should be getting zero, because the state should be picking up the cost. So it actually would benefit both the families and the center to take this, these funds. And they just haven't. Probably because I think it's, you know, it's one more thing to have to do the reporting.
Now they have a new director and I don't know what the capacity will be there. I'm sure all the people involved, now they have a new director and I don't know what the capacity will be there.
Not sure. I did ask Janine if Arlington finds that figuring out how to do the subsidies is complicated. Could Condon run the subsidy request through them? And they said, yes, they would be happy to run the ERDC money for them for Arlington. So that they don't have to figure out how to do the subsidies. But at this point, we can't even get a meeting with Arlington to explain any of this.
I'll work on that some more.
Okay.
I had a conversation last week and then, but I mean, the new director is new and, you know, has no clue about any of this.
Yeah.
Well, and I did throw after, you know, it's going to be really hard for the candidate to continue to subsidize this and also get some things to happen down there.
Yeah. And the last thing that's in here, and right now, this is probably going to be only applicable to Condon, maybe the preschool in Arlington. Is we are also asking that if the applicant has early head start or head start slots, that they are committing to advocating for annual increases in their contracts with early head start. So what's happening is even head start is not paying the full load. And so we're, our taxpayers are subsidizing head start slots. And part of that is Yumitul Moro is not passing through all the dollars that they're getting for our slots. So, yeah, so what happens is Yumitul Moro head start goes after a set number of slots in the region. And then they partner, they subcontract with our provider here and says, like for early head start. We'll place six slots in Condon basically, which is what is in the zero to three room right now, and we'll guarantee this amount. Well, they take a cut between the federal dollars coming into Yumitul Moro that get passed to Condon. They take a, a cut off the top to support their admin that's over there. But what's happening is they're shorting the centers and what it actually costs. Because attached to those early head start dollars are requirements for teacher qualifications and other things that drive up costs over here that are not being fully covered by Yumitul Moro. And so by putting this in, and basically I've run this by Janine, by, by the way, and she said this is actually helpful. Because when she goes to Yumitul Moro to negotiate the next contract, she can say, the county will not subsidize these slots. So you have to meet the cost or we have to drop the slot. Well, Yumitul Moro doesn't want to drop the slot, because if they don't have a place for it to go, they lose out on all that type of funding. And so they have an incentive then to actually come to the table and not have us subsidize their slots. And so that's why we're putting that in there as actual contract language that Janine can take. Where she goes to negotiate the next one and say, I'm contractually obligated to have you cover these costs. And then if you can't, then your slot can't be here, basically, to just give her a little bit more leverage when she goes in to negotiate. So that's why that's in, it's not meant to be punitive, it's meant to give her a tool. All the nitty gritty of the funding that Delaney and I have been learning for the past year. Then it says for our healthcare providers, same, same requirements that they be in compliance with all relevant federal, state and local laws and regulations. Pretty straightforward, same for any governmental agencies and special districts have to comply with all federal, state, local laws with regard to all of the things we have to do, public meetings, book records, ethics, audits, procurement, public budgets, all of the things.
All the dumb stuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, these aren't really controversial. The only ones that are really more restrictive are the early end ones that are compelling them to go after those dollars. And other than that, this would be the same application deadline, so it would be in conjunction with our budget committee. We are still asking for a sustainability plan. Oh, yeah, we did, we are suggesting that we actually bump up the match funding to 35%. It was at 15. But going back through the applications, I think all of our people are going to be there anyway. Arlington childcare might be close, if they go after the state funding like we're asking them to, they should have no problem.
So. For them to apply for spring operation grant.
Yes.
They have a bunch of stuff they need to do between now and then, and then you tell me involved in that, is that, I mean, is all that empty?
So they would need to, they could submit their application. They just have to have like the ERDC stuff in place within 60 days of asking for us to release the funds. So we don't actually release the funds till August. So they would have two months after August to actually have those come online. So if they will return our calls, we could probably have them up and running in a couple of months. But they have, what, six, seven months to actually do it from now. And the process for ERDC is probably not as time consuming as it might seem. And so that might be something they could even get up and running themselves before they even start working with Kelly, if they just start.
They don't know that, they don't talk to you, huh?
Yeah. We've been trying to get a meeting for what, two months?
Yeah, I actually talked to Haley, who's chair of the board, and she was supposed to reach out to you. Then I talked to Kelsey last week.
I'll reach out again, maybe the change in board, maybe if I can get the right person to contact you back.
I don't know Haley's last name, I don't remember, but Kelsey Beard is correct.
Well, we'll see what we can figure out. And let's see. Oh, and yeah, we're also suggesting a half a million dollar cap on this program, maybe the first time we capped it. That's based on what we funded last year for these entities. So we don't anticipate, I think the Condon childcare will likely come in with a much larger number than last year. Because they are anticipating this expansion being built. And I think Janine's trying to build in like adding teachers for all those new classrooms and kind of like pre. So it's going to look, it's going to be a significant bump because they're going to basically try to double the amount of services that they're providing once the expansion is built.
And then the sense of expansion will be done this year?
Possibly, we'll see. Just working on the drawings already, so we'll see how long that takes. Anything else in here?
No, it's expanding out towards the parking lot, is that what?
And then one of the things that we did put in both of them is we just adjusted the merit review criteria to refer back to the strategic plan when the grant committee is reviewing all these applications. So that way we just, again, really drive home the tie in between the strategic plan and our grant program. Okay, guys, what do you think?
It's a kind of a jump.
It's a huge jump.
A big jump.
I think it's needed.
So, okay, so I don't need a motion today. If you think we're in the right track, we'll make a few small adjustments, bring back the application next time, if that works.
And also approve the criteria, just editing the revolving fund for the capital investment.
Yeah, if you guys felt ready to do the guidelines, we can do them. And we can bring out the application if you want to look at it, or if you want to wait, we can wait and bring out all this package.
What do you suggest?
I think having the guidelines in place will help really make guide where the application needs to go from there. So if you guys are willing to take the jump, it would be great that way. It's also, we have time to start establishing those meetings and really getting people in place too ahead of time.
We'll take the jump, will you?
Sure, I am. Do you want me to make a motion?
Well, I'll move to approve the guidelines for the operational support capital. Investment grant program as presented.
As amended.
We're going to make the capital investment done on a rolling basis instead of doing just the law. You second in it?
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that we approved the guidelines for the operational support and capital investment grant programs as amended. Adding the rolling deadline for the capital investment. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, guys, big leap, I think we're going to be happy. Okay, we've got one more thing on the agenda. This was added, just to make sure I brought it up. So this is considered approval of engagement of services letter with CDR labor law. This is really just looking at our legal counsel support for questions related to our union members benefits compensation as well as our CDA. And so I am suggesting, I actually came across this law firm over in my role as 911 board member. And one of the reasons I am suggesting we might think about moving over to them is that it's an actual firm of like five attorneys. So we've just found in our previous experience with firms that we benefit by having multiple attorneys we can go to if somebody's busy at any particular time. And this one in particular, several of our partners have used, they negotiated the Norcore Contract for Management. Our partners with Jefferson County and then are working right now with the Frontier 911 Board on that negotiation. So my recommendation would be for us to move our services over to CDR. Just to really benefit from having multiple attorneys available to us. Questions?
I moved to approve the engagement of services letter for the Labor Council Services of CDR Labor Law LLC.
I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded that we approved the engagement of services letter for label, Labor Council Services from CDR Labor Law LLC. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, announcement. Oops, sorry, Les, I have this one minimized. Go ahead, Les.
Yes, thank you, Judge. Can you hear me okay? Good. For the record, Les, remark, I just have a quick question, actually it's more of a curiosity as usual. But is there a list that, that the county court can make available, either on the website or just email me a copy of it? That, that puts in place all of the, the number of attorneys and legal councils there are now for the county? And also some sort of aggregate amount of what the costs are for, have been, say like for the last year or so for, for those services?
Yeah, so we can, I can definitely give you a list. We, we have a total of four firms. So we have a planning council in Bend that Michelle works with. And then we have our local government law group who does our municipal stuff out of Eugene. We have our, our energy council, who is Laura Westmeyer with Cable Houston in Portland. And then this, this particular firm for just our labor law collective bargaining agreement side of things. And then in terms of the budget, I just need to, I would have Eleanor Nathan actually pull that. And they can pull out of what was spent out of the line items. There's two line items, one that's in the county court's budget that covers most of them. But then Michelle also has a line item in her budget for planning related bills. So we can, we'll circle back with the ask if Eleanor Nathan can pull that number for us.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'd like to also ask, just throw out there on the table, has the court given any thought to doing some sort of an evaluation on an annual basis of, of the councils that they're using? Just sort of as a way of, of either demonstrating the appreciation probably that, that it's involved or critiquing maybe where things haven't gone quite the way they needed to go?
I don't think we've contemplated it, and I think we've kind of done it ad hoc, if you will, like.
Absolutely.
If there was a problem or we felt like we needed to make a change, it was usually in response to a specific thing that happened. Or. Or in some cases, you know, we had counsel telling us they didn't have capacity to take on what we needed, which kind of forced the issue for us. And then in some cases, like, there's only so many people who specialize in energy council, for instance. So there's only so many places to go with that one. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, thank you very much.
Thanks, Les. Okay, so next regular county court meeting, February 15th, that one will be in Arlington. I am going to say that we probably will not plan on the strategic fan work session that meeting. Like, we may hold that off on that until March, if that's okay with you guys. So we have a little bit more time to plan. Okay. Yeah, okay. Pat, what do you have going on?
Well, and what's been going on, I went to my first Norcore Board meeting since last meeting. Also had a career meeting and a ULC meeting that I attended. I did get on the AOC Local Governance Committee meeting. I met with the mayor of Arlington last Sunday over. TV charging station and some of the downtown concerns down there. And then met with Cory with the Department of Arlington on Monday to. Bring input from the county side with support on their strategic plan. And, and anything that I thought I might add, whether going with their strategic plans. I did want to talk about the, I wanted to give you, when you get to update a little bit on the 911, I got a few questions just on things that we've talked about and what the status is. And then where are we at with the housing? Legal advice, I mean, I know you said they want us to talk to Yumitul Housing Authority, but I'm confused on what any of that means. Because.
So.
My understanding of them is all subsidy and stuff, and I don't know that, but.
And I, so I reached out to our legal counsel and she said that they are going to give us their customized packet for Gillon County. They've been doing it for a lot of their other public entities that they serve with as well, because a lot of public entities are looking at housing issues. And so basically it'll be kind of like a, a 101 of how to sell, develop, purchase, all of those things. And so it'll be kind of a guy, a reference guide for us to use. I didn't really ask about the Yumitul Housing Authority bit, because I was waiting to get that packet back from them to see kind of what.
Well, I think we need to kind of have a plan on what we're thinking about doing for, I, you know, any, any, to talk to them. So they know what we're looking at, see if they, if there's anything that they've got to offer.
So, yes, I think.
But I think it's preliminary to talk to them until we kind of know what, where we're going. And I do know that I, I will communicate my concern that time, I think, is an issue. If we're serious about purchasing the property, just, I, I do know that there's an interested party right now in the shop and the house, which is to be helpful. It's not necessarily a bad thing, but I would be concerned if that property got tied up with somebody that had been dealing with it.
Can the, can factors split it off?
Yes, well. I guess that's a Michelle question, sure. They are marketing it that way.
That they could split it off.
But, yeah, I'm pushing to get us to a decision or at least get an arrangement out there.
We think that we should have that by the end of this week. They were putting it together when I talked to them last week. Once I have that, I'll be sure to email it out.
I think we could tie an arrangement down that would give us lots of flexibility on, you know. Some sideboards on it, so we don't get tied to something that. Be concerned, yeah.
Anything else in here?
No.
One thing related to housing, since we're on that subject, I wanted to throw out an idea. We've been talking about like, regardless of where this lands, whether it's a nonprofit or. Needing capacity, basically, needing someone who's going to be able to shepherd projects through and kind of figure out all the ins and outs. And whether it's a public project or whether it's a nonprofit driven project or whatever. So our friend Nate Stice has not been picked up by Regional Solutions yet and is a free agent at the moment. And I wanted to just grow out and ask if there might be an appetite about approaching him, about thinking, about doing some project work in Gillon County and us providing some capacity funding. I don't know where he would land if he would become a county employee or contractor or land at one of our partners or wherever. But I just, I know he's still out there, his connections, I think, are invaluable. If he's going to be a free agent, I would like him working on our stuff rather than other people's stuff. And kind of being able to navigate the public and private sector of this, I think is going to take a special person. And I would hate to have somebody else, some other county finally come up. And I would hate to have somebody else, some other county finally come up with this good idea and stamp him up. And so I just wanted to see if like he and I have a conversation scheduled tomorrow, because I just was gonna throw out some ideas of like, would you be interested? But I wanted to see if you guys thought of that.
Well, I'd like to see where that conversation goes.
Okay, okay. I didn't want to overstep, so I wanted to raise He is coming from Governor Brown's Regional Solutions style. So, he is, he and his wife are based out of the Dells, but for the last, what, four, six years, he's been basically the governor's connection to our communities and all of our state resources that are based out of here.
I, I think, weren't we basically those signed the, what's her name, but Nate did all the workforce?
Yeah. Yeah, because Courtney is based out of Baker and so it just like was much more feasible for me to show, and Nate was showing up to meetings anyway, because Sherman County is in his district. So, we were all at the same meetings and at one point, I think probably Catherine and I joked with him, like, when are you just gonna start working for Gillon County too? And he actually went up to his boss and asked for permission and got kind of a special thing where he
And I met with him and Ryan down at the city of Arlington one day. Our community for sure.
I'm just thinking, you know, we heard from PCDC, we've heard from other people that are like tentatively like, maybe we could do development, but we definitely need somebody else to come in and do it.
Along those lines, I did talk to Tia Devon and there's some real interest for her to get out and run to that board. Of course, Dr. is one of the which leaves one board member. Their board is designed for three, seven. So, they're kind of, they meant their board requirements and yet they've always tried to maintain a five-person board and have been unable to for a long time. And they would like to see somebody come and take them. And my question on that is how do we put a bunch of people together on a board? How do we get them to do what we're asking?
Yeah.
Asking to do. I don't think we have any control over what they do at that point and that's, you know, that's no different than we find a CDC who doesn't really want to step in and sign this stuff.
There has to be an alignment of vision, I think.
And I, you know, I try and, try and get somebody to do that and step up to that board. I think you could probably find some people and but I, I mean, that's process.
Well, the thing I've been struggling with, we've spent a lot of time since our last meeting thinking about like, I really feel like the key to all of this is finally getting the structure in place, figuring out who's gonna do it. The who is to me the most important right now, but continues to be like this revolving question. Will it be the ports nonprofit? Will it be the city of continent itself? Will it be, I don't know, PCDC? And until we kind of zero in on that, and so, you know, part of me is also thinking if we're able to engage Nate that maybe he could help us figure out who the who needs to be and how that needs to be structured. Because I feel like that's the, like, once we do that, we can
It's county, might be the only way the county can get there is to form some sort of a county entity to do it. That is the court.
Yeah. Well, I will have that discussion with Nate and just see what his interest is. If he might be interested in start thinking about what a partnership could look like. It's still very, obviously, very beginning, but I didn't want to overstep and be like, hey, I work Gillon County and have you two go, what?
No, overstep.
I heard a rumor.
Yeah. Les, do you still have your hand raised or was that from your other question?
Well, I, I do, I do have my hand raised. If I may ask a question. Can you hear me okay?
You're kind of in a delay. I can kind of hear you, but try again.
Okay, I, I'll try again. Is that better? I'm assuming it is. Judge, I, I don't want to throw I don't want to throw any cold water on what you've just been talking about in terms of Nate. I, but I do need to maybe put something out there on the table a little bit here. I have a great deal of admiration for Nate, just as much as you guys do. And I'd really like to see him do what you're talking about doing. But the immediate thing that comes to my mind in your bringing it to the table like you are is that what's, what is that going to, that, and that relationship gonna look like in terms of protocol that you have to, that you'd probably have to go through to put it in place, i.e. is there gonna be some sort of a professional services agreement that you need to enter into? And in that case, are you looking at a dollar threshold amount before you can, you know, get there? And I, I just think it's only appropriate and I'm sure that Nate would probably want to see it reflected that way too, that if you are gonna, is that you are, I think you really do need to keep in mind that there might be a bit of a process for that. And the other thing that you might want to think about and you probably will easily enough talk with him about tomorrow. You know, I've been kind of thinking about it, given his position that he did hold with the governor's office. And there might be some sort of a delay involved in, that would be applicable to him in terms of a requirement that says you can't take a particular position that you held as the previous position that he did for a certain amount of time afterwards. Now, you know, I don't know if that actually exists, but I wouldn't be surprised if perhaps it did. Anyway, just, I, I, again, I'm not trying to impede anything here. I just think that that you as a governing body do need to keep that kind of situation in mind. Thanks for putting up with me here.
Absolutely. To your first point, I think, we'll definitely think through the process. I think part of it's gonna depend on if he, if he wanted to do this, where he would land. So, if it was I could see a scenario, for instance, where he might land at one of the nonprofits in the community and maybe the agreement is actually with the nonprofit that the county would provide capacity funding. Where it's not actually an agreement with us directly, other than we provide the funds to whichever partner he lands in. And then to your point about the revolving door, my understanding, at least my familiarity back when this was applicable to me in Congress is that generally those revolving door laws, if there is one, is about revolving between public sector and private enterprise. And where he would be looking at stepping into a nonprofit or a public sector, I'm not sure that it would be applicable. Because public service is public service. Usually, we try not to discourage people from staying in the public sector. That would be my guess. I don't even know if Oregon has a revolving door law, but that would be my guess. Um, yeah, what do you guys want?
That's a good point. I can appreciate that.
Okay, so, I told you I was gonna listen on Monday, the twenty-third, on the OHA fiscal call with Dana Drum, Holly, and they had two others from OHA. We went over the payment exclamation spreadsheet. And while they were reviewing it, they noted that at least three of the program elements areas were zero balances and OHA said they probably thought it was due to vacancies in those jobs. And so, those are gonna be corrected during their internal audit process. And then, of course, we were at Call, County College. And we were twenty-six students. Did you see our picture on the, the backs of our heads? And we went over government ethics, history of government, administrators, public records, all kinds of good stuff, so. Looking forward to next time. And then the last thing I just wanted to share that is a good story. Sabrina with Senior Services went to Summit Springs on Monday, January twenty-third, and eight of the residents, they made Valentine decorations that they are so super cute and they hung them on their doors. They had to do a little penangal in to get a few of the residents down to the room. But once they got them there, I think they had a good time and she was going to plan to go back and do decorations in March for St. Patty's Day. So, and then she's gonna look in to see if maybe seniors at the mill sites would be interested in those kind of things, so. Side, and on a happy note.
That's great. Um, okay, so on my end Pat asked about Frontier Telenet, Frontier 911, so the Telenet Board, that last it's all running together. So, we went, met last week. We had not met for several months. Like, I want to say maybe October, November, since we met. Mostly housekeeping stuff, not a big, you know, updates on the Cottonwood Tower, which is progressing. We have a new general counsel over there, so the current one resigned. The, one of the topics of discussion, which I always bring up, which I have addressed with you guys as well as we've been talking about what happens if Jefferson County leaves the 911 Center. We have intentionally cut 911 and Telenet separate because it's a little because there's four on one and three on the other. It's a little unclear how you would merge those and have Jefferson County delineate like the assets that the three smaller counties have built and maintain. But part of the discussion during Telenet, which never goes anywhere, because it's always just me pushing and Lynn and Joe are totally convinced, is I still think that there if Jefferson County especially leaves the PSAP, the 911 Center that there needs to be a discussion about whether Telenet and 911 merge and become one entity. And part of the reason I keep suggesting that is because when I first joined the board there was a dual purpose for Telenet. It was mostly emergency communications, that's why it was built, but it was also providing internet service in the three counties. For our county, it no longer provides internet service. The other two counties, it provides some internet service, but it's a far less than it used to be because of the fiber deployment that has happened since then. ZIO going into Fossil and all those kinds of things. And so, more and more, the system is actually an emergency communication system. And there continues to be a disconnect between the Frontier 911 Board, who doesn't actually have to pay to connect. I mean, they don't, they don't have to figure out when, when they add Jefferson County how technologically Jefferson County is gonna talk to the PSAP. That's Telenet's area. And what happened in particular when they added Jefferson County is they accounted for what would happen at the PSAP, the cost that would be incurred there. But they never had Jefferson County pick up the cost of connecting them on the Telenet side, which means the three little counties have been basically putting bill for Jefferson County to be running on our system. So, we pay for the switch, we pay for the towers. Only recently, they've started asking for 911 to kick some money over to cover the cost. But every time I sit in those meetings, the sheriffs primarily who are only on the 911 Board question why they have to pay the Telenet expenses. And that's in part because they don't, they don't have a say on the Telenet side. They know it's important, but they don't actually sit on those boards and the budget committee, and so there's this disconnect between the two. And so, I've always contended like, why have two boards that are basically charged with the same mission? Which is connecting our emergency responders to each other and to the PSAP. Why have two separate boards and treat them like two separate systems? There, one does not function without the other. But my colleagues do not buy, have not at this point bought into that for various reasons. So, that came up again. It comes up like on a regular basis. They roll their eyes when they say it and then we move on. But that is the latest on that. The 911 Board, I think, has a meeting in a week scheduled. We are going through a transition over there. We are without a director now and so Gary our sheriff has been appointed as the interim director, who's also the chair of the board. And so, he and Kim Snyder, who's working as the admin person, are going through and updating all of the policies and procedures, all the employee handbooks, all of the things that needed to be addressed. So, I'm expecting the 911 Board will meet more regularly. We usually meet once a quarter, but I think we're gonna start meeting monthly, at least for the next couple of months just to kind of iron out all of these policies and procedures. And then hopefully, once those are kind of in place and there's a new director hired, we'll go back to our quarterly meetings. There just needs to be a little bit more engagement and oversight right now. And questions from you?
Well, you know, I mean, you obviously answered some of them, but one of them was that you had told the court privately that you were going to try to have a conversation and see if you could work out a way to convince Telenet Board that merging was a good idea. So, I was wondering what the status was on that and if it's going or anything has happened along those lines. And I've done some questioning around because I assume at some point things stay like they are. There's gonna be some kind of, we're gonna have to approve. And so, I wanted, I'm trying to figure out through pieces, a lot of personalities involved here. Really difficult. And I did talk to Sheriff Ben Corr extensively the other day on his deal. I talked to Brad Lowery when I was at the North Core Meeting and I get different information from everyone about almost everything.
I didn't surprise.
Brad said that Jefferson County will never leave.
That's interesting.
And he also said that Sherman County is way more likely to leave than Jefferson County. And so, that's confusing from what we've heard here. And then Gary said he didn't think Jefferson County would ever be able to afford to leave, because they'd have to go to the shoots of Crook and it'd be extremely expensive for them. So, in all likelihood, they would stay. The problem, obviously, being the way they were brought in and now they use eighty-seven percent of the capacity of the 911 Center and all that stuff. And I struggle with, does it make sense or not? Because I hear, well, what are you gonna do with the assets? You're just gonna give Jefferson County a chunk of the assets. Which you know is gonna be the argument from the other two judges. And so, I just, I just wanted to get a feel of where you were with what I've heard. Based on other people's opinions of what's going on with the whole event system.
Yeah, and I think it sounds like it's conflicting, but I think we're actually all saying the same things. Which is what Jefferson County has told us, is that they are actively looking to move. They've gone to Creek County. Creek County is telling them, I think, one, it will be much more expensive than what we charge them. So, that's true, what Gary's saying. And two, Creek County will run into the exact same thing we're having here, which is, we have plenty of staff to handle our three little counties. You have the, you had the large county with ninety-seven and all of, like, the increasing kinds of emergency calls that are coming in, in Madras, and all of a sudden, you're short dispatchers. Which I think Creek County is looking at like, hey, we just got staffed to where we feel comfortable handling Creek County calls. Like, we're not equipped to take on that level. Like, if Mueller County were to go to Creek County, they would probably say, oh, yeah, that's not a big deal. It's too much. And they're sitting right next to the shoots county, which we understand is like at fifty percent in terms of their staffing or their dispatchers. And so, I'm not sure that they have an option. So, that's probably correct in that Sheriff Lowery saying, I don't think they're going anywhere, is probably a reality. They don't have anywhere to go. Until somebody says, yes, we can take you and we can do it cost effectively. So, that, those would be the two things. It's interesting that Sheriff Lowery said that Sherman County is more likely to go. And that's probably true in that they can be absorbed.
But similarly, with absorbing the Wasco County.
I think they're talking to Hood River, actually. But that Hood River could take them because their traffic is so small in comparison. But one of the things that came up that may be interesting that we talked about at the Telenet's side is what does that do to Frontier Telenet? Because if Sherman County pulls out if Jefferson County remains in place, the PSAP will stay here. That's, that's enough traffic and funds. If, if Jefferson County found out, maybe they decide to open up their own PSAP. That's still an option as well. We don't have enough to keep the PSAP here open then, with just Wheeler and Gillon. There's not enough 911 funds to support that. So, we would all have to go find a place to go. Well, the system that we have on the Telenet side is designed to network them all together and put them all into the PSAP here. Once everybody starts jumping ship, our neighbors to the, to the east don't have systems that are compatible with what we've invested in here. And so, but what we talked about in Telenet is, it's not so simple as to switch over to what Yuma Tilla more has because we also need interoperability with Wheeler and Sherman because of the way that we respond to emergencies. So, it was interesting because we talked about Sherman County moving Frontier Telenet. And when I raised the issue of the network and would Telenet need to dissolve? There's still an open question about that. And I think that looked to be something that was weighing on Joe's mind, at least, about whether to move. there's still an open question about that. And I think that looked to be something that was weighing on Joe's mind, at least about whether to move. But again, because Brad doesn't have to worry about that, Sheriff Lowery doesn't have to worry about that. He's not on the Telenet Board. I think for him, it's a clear cut, this is better service, is it cost effective, whatever. Whereas Joe has to think about what this does to the network that Sherman County is heavily invested in and whether they still need it, what that looks like with the switch. I mean, we all poured millions of dollars into that thing. Are they just gonna walk away from it? Is it compat, you know, like all of those things are still, I think, kind of open questions.
So the other thing you brought up is Cottonwood Tower. And this came from Sheriff Ben Corr, that he thought that the funding on that, which we approved funding the extra funding to do whatever needs to be done to make it meet the requirements that are whatever.
So.
So anyways, but before you, before you go there, he, he said what I thought was interesting. He says Sherman County doesn't want our money now.
They don't.
That they're gonna, they want to own that tower and then they want a charge to utilize that tower. Anybody that gets on it, they're gonna have a price for it.
Yeah, Lowery has threatened that. I'm not sure that that is how it will actually work in practice. Because Telenet is building it. And so it's a more complicated, like it's not their asset to run necessarily.
How they could just kick us out or whatever you want to call it. I mean, just, I mean, they're saying it was paid for, is what they're saying.
Yeah, so this was the interesting thing. For people who don't know the history of this, so there was a state grant that was provided to put a tower at Cottonwood when the state park went in to provide emergency communications for people using the park and all that. This was part of a planning requirement that Sherman County put in when they cited when they did the planning for Cottonwood to go in. So the state pointed out money. It sat at Telenet for years.
Nothing happened.
Nothing happened. And basically inflation surpassed what it was gonna cost to actually build the tower. So they were short, I don't know.
I don't remember.
Hundred fifty thousand something.
That's what we approved Sherman County.
Yeah.
Thank you for pardon.
So Sherman County talked to us about footing the bill since it's between our two counties and it's the two that benefit. We said yes. This court put the stipulation on it, though, that Joe and I, as the two counties who are we were representing the two counties putting money in, that he and I would make the decisions in terms of who was constructing and all of that within the board, which is not unreasonable. Like, we did the same thing for Wheeler County when they were running through broadband dollars from the state over in Wheeler County through Telenet. So it wasn't really a huge ask, but for whatever reason, Sherman County did, I think, did not like the idea of it being Joe and I making the decision. They wanted, I suspect, Lynn and Joe to be able to have an alliance and make decisions about Gillon County's funds. And so.
Well, that was my question because we've approved funds, what's happened to the funds? And that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, they were never extended. We approved them. I think they were approved in the last fiscal year. They never, they were never expended. And so I think at the time we were planning on taking them out of the discretionary because we, because Sherman County told us no. They just rolled over into the SIP funds, into the regular carryover that year. So we.
Remember whether it was that in the beginning of this fiscal year, but.
Yeah. So we never ended up releasing the funds and they never really gave us a good explanation. So it's just my assumption that they did not want me to have veto power over how Gillon County's funds were spent. They wanted Joe and Lynn to be able to make the decisions about the project potentially over my objections. I don't know what I would have objected to, but I didn't like that. So they turned down our money.
Interesting. So, well.
All of the palace intrigue.
See why I had questions.
And let me think, what else do we have going on? We're tracking down stuff on housing, trying to figure out what the best path forward is. Yep, I will be down in Salem on Monday for the next ASC meeting. I am going to try to pop in and see Representative Smith about some funding projects and maybe talk to him about our childcare projects, possibly housing, see if we can maybe get a combination of some projects and bills. The other thing that I just wanted to raise, I did have a meeting with Jeff Ashaw last week to kind of catch up on projects, various projects that we haven't been working on, the park.
Not much, and we got several.
Oh, yeah, we've got a lot. One of the things that is still outstanding is upgrades the bathrooms here. ADA, we actually approved him to move forward. The sticky point has been how do you do a project where you are basically needing to shut off water to the building in order to redo your bathrooms and still have a functioning courthouse? Like, this is what we struggled with. So we have talked about like closing down half of the bathrooms, doing the construction, all that, and then closing down the other half. The problem with that is finding a contractor that's willing to tie themselves up for that length of time is gonna be really expensive and bringing in subcontractors twice and all of those things is probably not practical. And so what Jeff and I talked about, and I'm just starting to sort of socialize this with our elected officials team is possibly picking like a three to four month window where we close down the courthouse to the public. And we allow our staff in and out with the understanding that they're not gonna have access to bathrooms. So we allow them to work remotely if they can do by appointment only for the public, just be very transparent that we're not gonna have that service available in the building. And like, there will be times when they're gonna be working right above the county court office when they redo the jury room bathroom that like, we may not even be in there because it's too disruptive to even be able to work if they're tearing things apart up here. So we're still kind of like working through like, when a good timing would be. But I wanted to flag that for you, that we're starting to talk about that is probably the most viable solution. And then just coming up with alternative, like the court would likely be maybe at City Hall or someplace and working circuit court to figure out if they could move their services in justice court to just schedule around it. And so we can get in and get it finished finally. It has a bait.
Supposed to be some barriers to out here.
Yeah, those are on the list too.
And then there's the library. There's the industrial part.
Arden Mills. And.
I think we need to not give him any more projects.
That he has actual plans. Yeah. Being developed for. He is, oh. One thing that was on our list, Leah, do you want to give us a second on where we are on the event center? Just high level, like where you guys are.
We, we looked at some plans and made some suggestions and I think then he's supposed to come make those changes and then come back to us the next county court meeting or the Fairboard meeting.
Fairboard.
Which will be February 15th, so.
So we talked about getting, with Chris Fitz, we talked about maybe getting Jeff on the calendar, probably in March, after you, after the Fairboard has an opportunity to look to the court review, kind of where the Fairboard has gone with their event center and familiarize them if there's any input that we can make, do it at that point before it starts getting into the procurement side of things while they're still drawing and figuring out the project.
Yeah, and at the same time, they're working on the potential office building across the way that would have the expansion.
Perfect. Okay, I think I think that is it. I'm sure I will leave and go, oh, I was gonna ask this. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? This is a long one. Okay, it is 1116 and I'll adjourn the meeting.